Prayer and the prayers. So let's pray. When we come to you this day, we thank you for the community we live in. We ask that you would continue to bless our community and bless the leaders of this community, leaders of this organization as they go about the business of our community. Bless it to give us wisdom and guidance and judgment to do the things that are in the best interest of our customers. We ask that you could be with our employees as they go out every day and do the business of the community. We ask that you could be with those folks in Alabama who were affected by the tornadoes. And we know there are utility workers down there working to restore the damage and be with those as well. We ask you to bless us food, nourish us with our bodies, and bless us to do your work. We ask you things with your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we really have one item for discussion today. We are going to review our electric rate stabilization plan. This is a follow-up from the work we did on the financial planning that we presented in November. This is really the kind of the culmination or the result of that work. So we've got a long presentation. It's 60 slides of absolute excitement that we'll go through. But we do have a couple commissioners who need to be out here 12:31, a quarter to one. So I'm going to try to move fairly quickly over the background information which you have, you've seen most of in November. But certainly, I know sometimes you all are shy about asking questions, but certainly don't hesitate to ask questions as we go through if something I need to cover in a little more detail. So with that, we'll get started. The first thing I want to say is, you know, we started this with our five-year forecast that we did in November. And I apologize, I need stand-up to get pressure off my brain. So we started that in November, and we've, and we really had a lot of folks that worked on this. So what I'm going to present is really the work product of a team effort. Started with the financial planning that Jason Potts and Lynn were instrumental in. Then, of course, we're talking about the cost of service. We've got Ted Kelly and Sarah Ruckman who are going to lead us through that part of the presentation. So Burns &amp; McDonald's, our partner on that. We also, for our financial planning and the bond work we do, we use Stiefel Nicholas as our consultants. They're very good financial consultants. And then when we got to the part to draft up the rate ordinance that follows through this, we, we had an internal team that worked on that, was led by Tim. On that team were Jason Potts, Sonya, Sarah McCoyn, Austin Mclemore, Lynn, and Michael. I think that's where my other team. And then through all that, especially when we get to the language of the rate ordinance, Pat has been heavily involved, as he always is, to making sure the language is in the appropriate form, that makes sense. And so he is kind of the final gateway for that rate ordinance, and he is, he has that in his hands now. And we're pretty close to that. We will have the final language, or the final draft language shortly. So with that, we'll get right started. So talked about the financial plan. You know, the first bullet point here is kind of, is skipping to the end, but when we get to the end of this, this plan will allow our overall electric rate, this is kind of our average electrical rate, to go down, we project it will go down each of the next five fiscal years. We talked about before that when we did the financial planning, we look at our financial metrics, we have to meet those metrics, and identify that we will have to take some action to maintain our debt service coverage ratio that's required by bond covenant and by our policy. So we're going to talk about how we're going to do that. And the way we're going to do that, we're really three components of this whole thing that work together. We're going to address that debt issue, coverage issue. We're going to do bond defeesence and refunding, pay off some bonds early, and refinance some bonds. We will need a FY 2020 base rate increase. And I'll talk about why that's needed as we get through the presentation. But we're going to also have fiscal '20 and beyond ECA and primarily ECCA rate decreases. And although we're going to have to have a base rate increase, the rate decreases for ECA and ECCA will more than offset that. So the good news is our customers will see their bills go down.
Just say that one more time.
The good news is our customers will see their bills go down. So what we're going to talk about today is our current, our rate structure, our current rates, the assumptions that we've got, that we went into the financial planning, discussed a little bit about the bond defeesence and refunding, the cost of service and rate development. Burns &amp; McDonald's going to take that up when we get there. Our updated financial and rate projections, and then we're going to go over what we've done to pull all that together in the rate ordinance modifications. So how did we get here? As I said, this is the culmination of a long road that we've been on. Really started when we started the IRP process in early 2013, which resulted in the analysis that said we need to shut down Elmer Smith and get out of the wholesale power market. That is the one driving factor that's led to all these other issues coming, coming to fruition. And then that resulted in our purchase of power agreements that we have in place, primarily with Big Rivers, but also with our solar facility in Western Kentucky. And as, what that does is it lowers our power supply costs. And lower power supply costs directly result in lower costs for our customers. And our goal when we started this was rate stability, because we've had a, a, a pattern of increasing rates to primarily to deal with our wholesale market shortfalls, and we wanted to stop that increase and stabilize our rates. And what we've seen that, that the result of this is we actually be able to start reducing our rate sum. And if you look back a little bit, two years ago, we had a presentation in this room on our old slide format, and, and we were dealing with ECA increases and what's the future look like. And we had all these options laid out, but you can see, we had projected by the time we get to this current, upcoming fiscal year, our rates to be north of 15 cents and continue to go up for fiscal '21. And you'll see when I get to later on the presentation that that trend is going the other way based on our, our most recent analysis. So our current rates, our, our base rates are currently, they're set by the approval of the city commission, they were last adjusted in fiscal '17. And that was a change to our ECCA rate to add some fixed costs into that rate. And then we've had ECA rate adjustments since then. Our current ECA rate is 5.07 cents per KWH. And of course, we've been done that in conjunction with raising the ECCA limit to keep that balance over from the customers to under $20 million. The environmental cost adjustment, that's the ECCA that I mentioned, that covers the cost at Elmer Smith for environmental compliance for SO2, NOx, mercury. And that currently averages about 1.69 cents per KW. So the assumptions that went into our financial modeling, we use our wholesale dispatch model, we use curves from, from this January. Our capacity revenues on the wholesale market side are consistent with our current projections, but we do see a significant decrease, as expected, in wholesale revenue, but a corresponding decrease in expenses when we shut down unit one, which is scheduled for, for the end of this coming May. At Elmer Smith, we don't have any remaining planned, remaining planned outages on unit one. We do have a three-week outage on unit two next month. That will get us to the finish line on Elmer Smith as far as planned outages go. And then we, we are planning to shut unit one down probably at the end of May, summer of 2019, and then unit two, a year later, summer of 2020. We did model that as we get closer to the shutdown time, we would have elevated outage rates, just as we ramp down maintenance and diminish maintenance expenses. We did assume in our modeling that our expenses will go up about 3% to 5% per year, excluding fuel and environmental costs. O&M expenses kind of taper off as we get closer to shutdown. And then after the shutdown, you know, our power supply will be the BRIC, the Big Rivers Agreement, beginning in June of 2020. So that's modeled in there, as well as if you get out further, the solar starts in 2020, end of 2022. And then when Elmer Smith station is shut down, then our GNA expenses also shift to other departments, and we modeled that as well. So this is what we're looking at. This is a slide we've seen before, but just the key here is these are revenue requirements. And you can see as Elmer Smith shuts down from fiscal, beginning in, with unit one and fiscal '20, then unit two, the blue bar is, is the, our total O&M expenses, you can see the effect of shutting Elmer Smith down. Our cost of supply.
Go ahead, Mr. Coach, about that. Why are our capital requirements more like in 2024 than they are right now? Is that because of the cost of shutting them down? Like you got 6,000, 6,081 there in 2024, but you've got the capital requirements that, say in 2019, of 5,246.
The green line?
The green line, yeah.
Those are primarily capital, now back on the distribution side.
T and D side.
Yeah, T and D projects are projected.
Okay.
Not Elmer Smith. So our cost of supply, and I apologize for talking fast, but I, I know you've seen this, but the takeaway here is the sum of the blue bar and the, and the orangish-red bar is our power supply costs. So most of that blue is Elmer Smith. You can see we get a little more purchased power, the, the red, in, in fiscal '20 when unit one shuts down. But as unit two shuts down, then most of our costs now, our, our power supply costs are now coming from, from our agreements, primarily with Big Rivers. And you can see we still have Elmer Smith costs going forward. Most of that is debt, but there are also some ongoing O&M costs that are included in here as we move forward. But you can see the magnitude is way down, and now the PPAs take over as our prevailing cost of, of supply. We talked about in, in, in November, as we look at this, at the future, we have to make sure we compile the financial metrics. And the one that jumped out at us was our debt service, service coverage ratio. It needs to be above one, and you can see we projected that if we didn't do anything with revenues or debt, that we were going to fall below that requirement in fiscal '20. So that's driving a lot of the, or it is driving the, the plan that we've, that we analyzed several different options, and the best one of those, we talked about in November, was a combination of, of bond defeesence and refunding and a small base rate increase. So those are really to address this metric going below its required limit. So the bond defeesence and refunding, part of that is a two, really over the next two years, it uses our reserves, the benefit to shutting down Elmer Smith. As we shut down Elmer Smith is, is we don't need as high a level of reserves, we keep reserves for, for transacting in the market as well as for, for Elmer Smith. So we can use those reserves without impacting the financial stability or financial of the system. So we're going to use about $19 million of reserves to pay off portions of some 2010 and 2013 bonds. We'll use up to about three and a half million. And when I say, when we say up to, it depends on, you know, the, the final borrowing costs and interest and all that, but about three and a half million this fiscal year, and that's defeesence of some 2010 bonds, and then another 15 and a half million in fiscal '20. And that gives a really good benefit because it reduces our debt service, which helps with the debt service coverage ratio, and also saves us money in future interest. So we're projecting a total savings of about 22.2 million over the, over nine years. One thing, the refunding, the, the second piece of that, the next fiscal year, is mostly defeesence or paying off debt, but also some refunding. And we've assumed the current interest rate plus 1%, so that can be effective. We think, still think that's a good assumption, but that could be effective if interest rates move on us outside that window. So what we'll see, we'll bring to you in, in, at the next meeting, is a, an ordinance for the bond defeesence of up to about three and a half million dollars of 2010 A taxable bonds. And then in fiscal '20, the second phase of that will be defeesing and refunding about up to 15 and a half million of bonds, and we'll be doing that in October of '19 of this year. So moving from, in addition to the defeasement, that wasn't enough to get us full coverage on our debt service coverage ratio. So in addition to that, we need a base rate increase. And jumping to the, to the, to the end of the financial analysis, it's about, we need about a 4% increase in base rate revenues, and that will get us in compliance with that debt service coverage ratio in addition to the, the defeesence and refunding. We'll talk a little bit about how we're going to do this, but it's really going to be a two-step, a two-step increase, beginning in June 1 is what we projected. But we don't, we expect no base rate increases after that in our projection. So once we do this, the base rate increases, we're not seeing any in the next five, the four years after that. And then as I said before, reductions in the ECA, ECCA rates will more than offset the base rate increase, so that overall, at the end, in 2020, when both of these steps have been implemented, we expect our overall, our average electric rate will go down by about 5.8%. So look a little bit of those, what that looks like on our metrics. This is our, our debt service as it stands today. The defeesence will, will eliminate the hatched bars and lower our debt service moving forward. And then, and with the defeasance with the base rate increase takes our red bar, which was not, not acceptable, to now the yellow bar, which shows that our, that our debt service coverage ratio in each year is above the requirement. And one thing about the, the debt service ratio is it's a one-year look. So, you know, if you've got a really good one here, you can't average it because it looks at each year's revenue, each year's debt service. So, you know, you can't take advantage of, of, of an average over time. Our other metrics, base cash with the city transfer, we're in good shape with cash. Here's the policy requirement, we're well above that. And our ECA balance, this is the other thing that we, we're looking at, and we've raised that to 20. We projected to be up near that, but as this plan takes effect, our ECA balance will slowly decline, or actually pretty quickly decline over the next four years, to the point where in, in the future, we can, if we so choose, and we would probably want to do that, take our limits back to where they were historically at, plus or minus $10 million. So you can see that ECA balance moves in the, in a positive direction for us. So now we are to Ted and Sarah's part of the presentation. So we will unmute them and turn it over to Ted and Sarah.
Kevin, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. With me today, Sarah Ruckman is here. She's been the principal analyst, working very closely with Jason and Lynn. We've gotten through this. And I want to start, if we look at the agenda slide, and I'll try to remember to say next slide, so we can keep moving forward. I've got a high, high bar to meet because Kevin was able to move through things very quickly. Appreciate that. But the overall process, for those who haven't been through this process before, some of you probably have, but it gets into really, there's three key steps. The financial planning, which in this case we relied on the financial plan that you had developed internally there at ONU. We reviewed that information, sat down with Jason and Lynn and raised some questions, and I think there were a few little adjustments after that review, so that we had a financial plan that we all felt comfortable with moving forward. Then we got into the cost of service analysis, which is the second piece of this, and that's really addressing allocating costs based on various functions of writing service to customers to the various customer classes, to see in general, are the customer classes paying what they are, should be responsible for. And then once we've determined that, that cost of service gives us guidance in, in designing proposed rates. So we've done that, we've put together then some typical bill comparisons. And as we go through this, certainly if you have questions, feel free to interrupt me. Just speak loudly and I'll cover things quickly. So moving on to the financial planning, if we go to the core assumption slide, our core assumptions were based on what you had developed internally. It includes a customer forecast that has a slight decrease, I believe, on the residential side, and slight growth with other classes. And that's something that we're seeing pretty much across the board, that growth has slowed considerably for most utility systems. The O&M expenses, I think Kevin touched on this earlier, we used 2019 budget as the baseline. The forecast included inflation of about 3%, but O&M expenses, depending upon the expense, were increased at 3% to 5% over the forecast. The power supply, we're including that transition from being a generator to being a purchaser of your power supply. The capital improvements, we utilize the information that your staff has pulled together as far as the overall system capital improvements to cover all things, including the transmission/distribution system. And then we consider rate revisions over two years. We did look at the possibility for some future rate classification changes. It was decided this time is best to leave our classifications as they are and focus on adjustments to those rates. So if we look at the findings slide, our key findings in this case were, on the base rate revenue side, we need an increase of 4% this year. The ECA, ECCA reductions, as Kevin mentioned previously, more than offset that base rate adjustment. I do want to point out, there's always risk when you're making changes. One of those risks could be changes in customer usage at any customer classification or large customers. The loss of a large account is also a risk that is a potential out there. You could have the need for some unanticipated capital needs, although you've had a pretty good handle on what your capital requirements are, but there are always those things that you can't, you can't anticipate that could impact you. And then if something were to happen, a higher than anticipated power supply cost, although your contract that you have now with BRIC seems to be a pretty secure power supply moving forward. So I want to jump right into the cost of service analysis. If we go to the cost of service analysis slide, what we typically do when we go to cost of service is we are taking that forecast, the revenue requirement for your test year, and we are unbundling that, breaking that up into your power supply, which is composed of your demand costs and your energy costs, your transmission costs to move the power around the system, your distribution to get it to the customer, and then your customer costs. And then we assign all those costs to your various customer classes, your residential, your commercial, your large power, all those, we use fact, we develop factors to allocate the costs appropriately to the customer classes, and then we summarize those results. And if we look then at the next slide, the findings, the current cost recovery by class is fairly reasonable. There are some inequities that exist, and that's typical when we get through with that process. And we look at cost of service and make adjustments by class to move toward a more equitable cost recovery. So here's our cost of service on the next slide, the results with the proposed adjustments. It's a little busy, but what we see is that the overall requirement of 4%, if we look by residential, commercial, general service classifications and all, kind of ignore the security lights, those are, are, are off to the side. We know, we're reducing those light costs through charges to the lighting class. So the important thing here is, we see the residential, if we were trying to, to meet cost of service, the requirement would be almost a 10% adjustment with a decrease in the commercial. What this cost of service gives us is a description of cost of service, not prescription. So at the bottom where we have the recommended adjustments by class, that's how we're moving toward cost of service and a more equitable recovery of costs between classes. So the 4%, we would propose an adjustment on the residential side of a 5% increase, a 1% increase in commercial, your general service classes A and B is 7% adjustment, the primary class 1%, and water system a 7% adjustment. And that produces overall revenue to meet your overall revenue requirement. If, if those adjustments, and we use billing data for the system based on, on historical billing data to test things as we move forward, but those adjustments would give you about $50 million in revenue generated, and if you look up at the revenue requirement line, it's about $50 million. Any questions on that at this point before I move into proposed rates? Okay, hearing none. We will move ahead to the proposed rates and typical bill information. If we look at residential year one, your current residential rates are comprised of a fixed charge for single-phase or three-phase service and an energy charge. You do not have demand charges for residential customers. Currently, the, you can see the fixed charge component at $10 or $20, and your energy charge at 6.98 cents. Then those ECA charges, you're currently at 5.07 and 1.69 cents. Under a proposed year-one adjustment to produce the revenue requirement, we wanted to raise the fixed charge a little bit more because you should be trying to recover more of your fixed charges. That's just a move in the industry that's a little more appropriate. So we're raising that $2.5 to $1,250. And then the remainder of our overall increase, we're recovering through the energy charge, so it goes up to 7.14 cents. And on the three-phase, the customer charge is $25. But to offset some of that increase, or more than offset the overall increase, the ECA goes down to 4.3 cents, and the ECCA goes down to 1.68 cents. Next slide.
Can I have a question? Could I have a question?
Yes.
You know, when you raise that base rate up, you're hurting a little man out there, and your answer, your answer to that was that's what the industry's kind of going towards. That doesn't seem like a good idea. I mean, just because the industry's going, industry's going that way, is that really the right thing to do? Shouldn't we be keeping that as low as we're getting? I know, I think LG and A have been wanting to raise theirs to $25 or something. There's been a big debate about that, but is that, can you give me a better answer than that's just what the industry thinks, that's the way the industry's moving?
Well, what this is doing is it helps your, your revenue stability, and it is something that we tried to take into consideration, even that low user. We, that's why we only went up just a little bit, so that with the offset in the reduction to the energy charges and the ECCA, the low user would still see a reduction to the bill. Does that help answer that for you? And I think this typical bill might help show that. Your average residential user is using about 870 kilowatt hours a month, and their existing bills are just under $130, and they go down to $127, so almost a $3 savings. But that low user still sees just under a $2 savings.
Yeah, I know we're, we're probably at the lowest around. I looked at KU and LG and A and Pennirol and some of the other ones, and what is, what is Kenergy, what is Kenergy's here in Davis County?
It's about $18.
$18. So I know we're lower than everybody else, but it was just, I know there's probably some questions about that.
Well, there's, we worked very hard to get to this point where every, where most of our residential are going to see, we can't say everyone, but most of them will see a reduction in their bill. And one of the things that, that, you know, we've actually done, we had a class on rate structuring and all that, and one of the things that, that I hadn't ever thought about that makes sense is your low-income folks are not necessarily always your low users. So a lot of time, your low user is a landlord who has empty properties, who's paying a fixed charge, and the properties are empty, so they're not collecting, they're not getting the benefit of the KWH because they're not using KWHs. So it's not always the low user, it's not an absolute, but not always a low user is a low income or the folks that.
That's true.
But there are some, you know, certainly folks on fixed income that is any rate adjustment. But overall, we work very hard so that all these customer classes, and also within the class, the, the usage rates, we would, we try to get so that everyone would exceed, would see a, a decrease in their bill.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah, Kevin, you hit on a really good point, is, is people typically think low-income is low-use. And, and the problem with that is sometimes low-income are not the ones that can afford more efficient appliances, they can't afford the, the weatherproofing and all that, so they end up being a very high user sometimes on average. So, but I think the care that we took here, and, and we did, I know Jason and Lynn can can speak to this too, we did a number of scenarios to come up with a rate option here that would produce savings, and I can't tell you that it'll be for everybody, but it would be for almost everyone, that they would see an actual reduction to their bill.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So we're on the residential typical bills year one, and that's the single-phase and three-phase bills. If we go with residential rates for year two, we rate that fixed charge just a little bit more, but if you look back, our, our energy rate, I'm going to go back, it's at, in the year one, we're at 6.98 cents. When we go to year two, we actually dropped the energy rate to 6.84. So that's how we keep the, the typical bills. Again, we're, we're moving the fixed charge component up to, closer to where it really should be, and that's based on when we did our cost allocations, there are certain fixed costs that are there on a, for a residential customer, and the fixed costs are actually probably more than the $15, but we're trying to hold that carefully. And if we look at the typical bill for year two, because we're, we're raising the fixed portion, but we're lowering the energy charge, even the low customer at 700 kilowatt hours sees about a $3 reduction to their bill for a single-phase customer. So overall, that, that low user is seeing over a $4 reduction in their typical bill after the end of year two. And similarly, we, you know, you can see the single-phase and three-phase typical bills year two, and that gives you an indication of year-two savings. That's not the total, you'd have to add the two together to get that. Any other questions on the residential? Okay, I'll move right to the commercial rates for year one. Similar to what we did Similar to what we did on the residential, your commercial, single-phase customer sees a $10 customer charge, three-phase is 20. We are proposing to rate that and stay in line on the, on the customer charge with residential like we have. The rates have been that way in line for a long time. So we're taking the customer charge up to $1,250 and 25. The energy charge goes from 6.98 cents to 7.14, and then the ECA again is reduced. If we go to the typical bills for year one, we're seeing the average customer, single-phase uses about 1,300 kilowatt hours on a monthly basis. They would see about a $5.50 change or reduction. The low user would see about a $3.66 reduction. Three-phase, similarly, there, their usage is a little bit higher, but you can see that their reduction is a little more significant to the bill as far as in total dollars. Percentage-wise, it's a little less, but the dollar reduction is more. And then if we look at year two rates, we're rate, again, we're keeping the parity between the residential and commercial customer or fixed charge rates, we're going up to 15 and And then our energy charge drops a little bit more, so when we look at typical bills for year two on the commercial, where again, we're lowering their bill, the average customer's going down another little over $7.80 or an additional 4.27%. Any questions on the commercial bills? What's proposed there? Okay, I'll move to general service. General service, you have the general service secondary A and B. The customer charge currently is the same for both. We're raising that customer charge or propose to raise that $10 a month, and the energy charge then goes up slightly from 388 for A and 520 for B. We're going up to 353 and 543. And the demand charge, because they are demand customers, we're leaving the demand charge alone on these customers. And this was discussions we had with Tim, with Jason. I know your general service customers, one of their problems has typically been the demand charge is what raises their bill, so we were trying to leave the demand component alone and recover what we need to from those customers, the adjustments through the fixed charge and the energy charge. And we can see that if we go to the typical bills. Under the existing rate, the average general service A is paying 4,787 a month. We're, we're lowering that to 4,557 basically, so a $230 decrease, which is 4.82% overall decrease on an average customer. On the general service B, secondary B customers, that decrease is not as significant percentage-wise. It's only a 3.43% difference, but it's $81 a month for the average customer in that When we look at year two rates, the customer charge is going to go up to 40, and then we change the energy charge, but again, the demand charge is, is staying put. So we look at typical bills here, and they would see, the general service A customers would see about another $190 difference or decrease, and the general service B would see about an $81 difference per month. So trending-wise for those customers, we're seeing that reduction that we want to see for general service customers without impacting their demand charges, which has been an issue for them in the past. So any questions on general service bills? Okay, we'll look at general service primary rates. There, the current rate is a $30 a month fixed charge, which is really pretty low, so we're proposing to raise that to $60. The energy component is at 3.16 cents. We're proposing that that would go up to 3.24, and we're leaving the demand charge at 5.69 for KW. What that proposed rate does then, when we look at the typical bill for general service primary, the average customer would see a decrease of about $4,450 a month or 6.2%. So the decrease for all the customer, you know, average, low and high, percentage-wise it's about the same, but you can see those savings. For year two, we're proposing to raise that, that, well, let's see, wait a second. When I say that, we're at $60, we're leaving the customer charge at 60, and we're changing the energy charge slightly to get year two. And what that does there on, on the average customer is they'd see another little over $3,000 reduction to the average customer in the general service primary class or another So that's your general service primary. Any particular questions? Because that's all the rate classes that we made adjustments for, so I'm open to any discussion or questions that you have on any of the rates. It's a pretty favorable story to be able to tell because I will tell you, it's very difficult to get, to see reductions being passed through to anyone these days, given the current market on the energy side. So all the things, all the steps you're taking to reduce costs, to move from generation to purchase system, being able to change those charges and actually produce a net decrease to your customers is very positive. Okay, no questions, I will turn things back over to Kevin.
Thanks, Ted. So jump back in, and again, I just like putting that second bullet up there along, so. One of the things, though, and Ted touched on it in his presentation, that we talked a lot, we've talked about, and we talked a little bit about in November, we got to be aware of, is that the two-year part of the plan, you know, we feel really good about, as we get farther out on our projections, you know, they are projections, and one thing we know about projections is they're going to be wrong, just how wrong are they? So you've heard that before, haven't you? So a lot of things could happen that we try to take into account, the best things that we know about today, the best information we have, but, you know, our costs could go up, you know, we're relying on another projected year of Elmer Smith operation. We've got to continue to manage our costs there as well as, you know, we're relying on another year of wholesale revenue, so those could be different than what we projected. We've got decommissioning for Elmer Smith coming up. We think we've got that handled, but that could change on us. We've got potential liabilities with pension or other regulatory changes that could, could change the future for us, things like tariffs, raising, raising Tim's material prices. So we try to, we did take into account the best information we have today, always understanding that these things can move on us. So, so we talk about this, these are projections, but we feel pretty good about, well, we feel really good about where we are and, and the direction we're headed. So with that, here is the, the rate projection. The residential rate, you can see we are at 14.928 all-in for our residential rate. We project on fiscal '20, when we implement this plan, to go down to 14.52, down to 14, and that rate continues to go down through our projection period. And why does that happen? We've talked about raising base rates, and I think that's something that's going to be hard for customers to get their minds around, that we're raising base rates, and we're going to go to the city commission, letting you guys approve the, the plan and ask for a base rate increase, and that's kind of going to be what everybody hears. So, but our rate component is more than just the base rate, we all know that. So I'm going to go through a couple slides here that kind of show how these moving parts work together with the base rate, ECA, ECCA, and Ted did a good job of showing, showing you how those numbers work. So this is our rate, our total residential rate as it's built up. So the blue is the base, the red is the ECCA, and the green is the ECA. So this is our projection. So you can see the green, the ECA, we're projecting to drop it down in fiscal '20 from where it is now and then leave it flat. We're not expecting any ECA adjustments, we're projecting, you know, over the course of time. We're projecting to raise the base rate one time. You can't really see on this slide, I'll have known, the, the blue bar is a little taller here, but then you can see that ECA, as we phase out of Elmer Smith, those costs go down, and so the total rate goes down. And this slide really tells that story. This is the year-over-year change in each one of these components. So if the bar is on top of this line right here, that means that rate went up. If it's below that line, that means it went down from the previous year. So you can see in fiscal '20, there's the base rate increase of about 4%. Here's an ECA rate decrease. The ECCA is a little bit of an increase, but it stays effectively the same in, in year one, but our total rate, the white bar is the total rate, goes down. The next year, you can see the ECCA drops off. We've shut down unit one at this point, we're beginning to shut down unit two, our total rate drops again, same thing. Now would seem the kind of the full impact of Elmer Smith shutting down on the ECCA, so it drops again, our total rate goes down in year three, then the ECA drops in the last two years, so the rate goes down again in the last two years. So that kind of shows you how those moving parts work together, so that we see that we are increasing the base rate one time, but our costs or our customers are decreasing. Ted went over this, this in pretty good detail. The, the last column here, though, is the cumulative effect of, over the two years of the rate impact to the customer bill. So the average residential will see about a cumulative 5.6% decrease, commercial about a 7%, the GSSA about 8.82, GSSB a little under 7%, 6.85, and then the GSP, the cumulative impact in the two years will be about a 10.6% decrease. Ted went through this in good detail, so I won't go with that, but those show the customer charges for the current year one, year two. And then here's a table that he had all the rates. You can see the impact, we raised the customer charge a little bit for residential, commercial, but we lowered the KWH's charge correspondingly, so we can continue to get that, a total of the 4%. So now I'm going to switch, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Hopefully I go a little slower now, talk a little slower. Switching, talking about the draft rate ordinance that we've been working very hard on, it is nearly complete, and of course, the rates will be new in it as we've just talked about, but we've made some other changes. There are some cleanup and some modification that, as we have this opportunity to take, to clean that ordinance up a little bit. So on payments and late fees, we've extended the payment due date or proposed to from seven days to 14 days. The current rate ordinance has a cap on late fees at 10%. We're proposing to lower that to 8%. And then we've added language to allow the utility commission to set that, establish the amount of the late fee somewhere between 0 and 8%, but not exceed what's in the ordinance. So that gives you some flexibility on that late fee. And then we've added language so that will allow us, we did not have this in the ordinance before, will allow us to collect amounts that we've underbilled customers for whatever reason, and also to credit customers for amounts that we've overbilled them. The, the ordinance just didn't have that language in it before, and that corrects something that we've needed to correct for a while now. We did update some of the, the language and some of the things that were, the language was maybe a little bit unclear or had some ambiguity, so we clarified that our general service secondary rate applies to customers with an average annual usage of greater than 8,000, or average monthly usage of greater than 8,000 KWH. We eliminated the new facilities maintenance agreements, those are very rarely used, so we eliminated that from the GSP rate. We've also, on the applicability of the GSP rate, that was a little bit ambiguous, so we added a language that before was 1,000, it just said 1,000 KW, now it says it's 1,000 KVA based on the transformer capacity, so that how we, that's how we apply the GSP rate. We would have some current GSP customers that wouldn't meet that, and they will stay on the, the existing GSP rate, so we won't force them off of it, unless they transfer their service or they modify their equipment, then they would go to the appropriate rate that's applicable to them. One thing we had to do is, is the language for the ECA and the net metering credit, for the ECA calculation of the, of the cost of the net metering credit is strictly based on costs at Elmer Smith, or almost all based on costs at Elmer Smith. So we know going forward that it's going to be, our power supply is not going to be Elmer Smith, it's going to be these purchase, power purchase agreements. So we just updated that language to allow that to be purchased energy costs as well as the cost from Elmer Smith. We clarified the net metering import limits in our, in our, in our, our existing net metering rate. One of the things we have in our net metering rate that, that just, the way it was, probably wasn't anticipated when it was written, is it causes a real, a real headache for, for billing the way we bill it. So we've added some language so it lets them use an average of the two of the three preceding, first two of the preceding three months to calculate that credit. It really won't have a net effect on the customer, but it allows us a better in, in a way to calculate that, and also that's how we do the ECCA calculation, so it's consistent with how we do those, those things on our billing. We have added a new cogeneration rate. This is, this is new to our rates. This would apply to a GSP customer who wants to, who is or wants to self-generate for all their needs. This is not renewable, this is, this is non-renewable self-generation if it's greater than a megawatt. What this would do, it would allow the customer, we don't have the mechanism now to allow the customer to get credit if they're interconnected to our system and they're supplying energy into our system, so this would allow for that credit in the cogeneration rate. The cogeneration rate has, is applied in conjunction with, we have an existing supplemental or standby service rider. For a, for a cogenerate, you would have to also be on the standby service rider, which allows the customer to get backup power from OMU when it's needed if, if they're self-generating. So we modified that language as well to, to make it a little bit easier for the customer to apply that.
What was that model that did?
The SSSR?
Those numbers.
We looked at the co-gen rates of various, lots of other utilities and tried to model it based on what's kind of out there in the, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. So in summary, I'll say that again, we project a rate decrease over the next two fiscal years, and we project actually the next five fiscal years to decrease. The three components of that plan, the bond defeasance and refunding, fiscal '20 base rate increase that we've gone over, and then the corresponding ECA and ECCA rate decreases. And again, if you take the average of all those bills on that, that one chart and average them up, it lowers the, the, the overall customer bill, about, the overall, it decreases about 5.8%. So one of the next steps, we are wrapping up the language and the rate ordinance as well as the, the bond defeasance language for that action that will, we plan to bring to you on the regular meeting on March 21st. For the rate ordinance, we'll have to have a public hearing, we'll have that on that day as well. We are right now planning for the defeasance and rate ordinance to be presented on the first reading to the city commission on April 16th, and then the, the second reading on May 7th, so that we can get everything implemented, so the rates will be effective on June 1st, 2019.
Still in general meeting with the elected officials?
Absolutely.
Before the March 21st meeting?
Well, I was going to meet with them after you acted between March 21st and, and March the, or, or April the 16th, but between now and that, between now and April 16th for We also will be working on a, as a matter of fact, we already have a communication plan for our, our customers, especially for our large customers, our GSP, GSS. Sarah does a really good job communicating with them on changes we have in our rates. We did that for the water rate increase. This is a better story to tell, so hopefully that those communications will be a little That's all I had on this. Be happy to.
Thanks for all the work you've always done on this.
We got a really good team working on it.
There's a lot of different parts and there's a lot of different people that I think the average is lowering, and especially lowering our, our commercial customers down. They have to subtract more industry company.
And, you know, as the team and working with the cost of service with Burns and McDonald, that's one of the things, you know, we know those larger customers are driving our, the, our economy and our, you know, where employment is, and we felt like that that was, and the cost of service really bore that out, so.
And for all the work you all done over the last year to get this point to make this all possible. And that does that.
Question, since we're looking at an increase. We weren't looking at increases before.
Absolutely.
Anything else? I'll read the words. I'll read the words. We will have a brief close session, I hope. So your motion was to go into close session, discuss personal matters, percent of KRS 61, 810, 1L. Pending litigation, percent of KRS 61, 810, 1C. And matters are required to be discussed in 50% of KRS 61, 810, 1K. Completely not limited to KRS 61, 810, 1CI and KRS 61, 872, 6.
All those favors there?